All right, welcome everybody to today's meeting of the Jones Library Board of Trustees. Please indicate your presence by responding, Farah.
Here.
Thank you, Jean.
Here.
Tammy? Tammy didn't hear you.
Here.
There you go. Nat?
I'm here.
And Austin, I'm here. And Lee, we're gonna wait for one sec, Lee seems to be joining us.
Yes.
Thank you, Lee Edwards. Okay, I know of any changes or additions to the agenda? The next item is the approval of the minutes from November 8th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Corrections to the minutes? Okay, voting on approval, Farah?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Nat?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And Austin votes, Austin votes yes. Okay, next item is public comment, there are four attendees, if anyone wishes to make a public comment, if they would, please raise their virtual hand. Okay, I see no hands. Okay, so, I just wanted to remind us where we are in the building, on the building process. As you know, we received two bids, one came in under budget. We are in the midst of the ongoing 106 process. We have supplied to the MHC Alternatives Analysis based on their findings of adverse, the findings of adverse effects. We are waiting for their response. I believe they have 30 days to respond and the 30 days would be up on December 23rd, I believe. And we'll talk a little bit more about some of the details about the building project in just one second. I want to confirm the meeting dates that are on the agenda. Anybody have any problem with those meeting dates? And the proposal is to meet at 4:00 PM on those dates. January 23rd, February 27th, March 20th, April 24th, May 22nd, June 26th. Isn't today some big sun shining day?
Tomorrow, I think.
Oh, it's not, it's not today?
It's the solstice, isn't it?
I think it's tomorrow.
It is tomorrow.
And what is the one that happens in June?
The summer solstice.
The summer solstice.
All right, enough about the sun, so do we have any objection to the dates? Okay, if you would put them in your calendar, whatever, that would be, that would be wonderful. We have a tradition of giving some celebratory gift to our, to the staff of the library. And Sharon is proposing, Sharon?
I'm sorry. $42.50 from each of the six of you, so that the 51 staff members can give cards to Amherst Coffee.
And how do we go about communicating, getting these funds to you, would send a check to the library, what do we do?
Please, yeah. Check cash.
Check made out to?
The Jones Library.
The Jones Library. Okay. And is there a holiday party that we're not invited to?
It happened last week, yes, everybody had a great time.
Yes, we all had a great time, where were you, Austin?
I must say, I think that falls into the category of, don't ask questions that you're not prepared to hear the answer to.
Darren, where was it?
Oh, so it was actually the town holiday party for employees at, it was at the UMass. If you said it, I'd say, yes, that's what, that's what it is, I forget the name of it, it was at a new location this year.
And was there fabulous food?
Always fabulous food, fabulous drinks and fabulous company. Everybody, you know, throughout the town, they get their five-year, 10-year, 15-year anniversary certificates, there's a raffle, it's awesome.
Wow. Okay, put it on your calendars for next year. Guess, I mean, it's a guess, put some date on and then you may or may not be right. Okay. Other than that, again, I just want to say as we end the calendar year, a word of gratitude to our director and through our director to our, to our staff for the wonderful work that they continue to do. I think in particular, there are many people to thank, but I think George gets a special thank for keeping things moving and in good repair, insofar as that is, that is possible. And to all of you, again, thanks, and I hope you have a happy holiday season and a very healthy, and a very healthy new year. And I hope the Red Sox sign a significant free agent.
Starting pitcher. Please.
Okay, so back to the library building committee. Sharon, do you want to say something about the interim space, where we are on that?
Nothing, nothing has changed, I, I think, you know, things are kind of on hold, waiting for MHC and, and to get through the holidays, so we'll pick it back up in January.
Thank you. And you all know that the MBLC unanimously approved an extension on our grant. The extension date provides more time to sign a contract with the general contractor. Okay, any questions about the building, the building project? Farah?
Yeah, just one question. So if, if everything goes well and we hear back from the MHC, does that mean the next day you can sign a contract? Is that how it works, Sharon?
It depends on what they say, there will be some kind of negotiation, so at this point, we just don't know what the timeline will be.
Okay.
And the 106 process doesn't end with a determination by the mass historic because they're federal.
Right.
It's a process at the Fed.
Thank you.
I did want to say publicly, and I hope that our good, our good clerk can, I think we are all tremendously grateful for the work that Mindy Dom and Joe Comerford have done. And with, for the support that town officials have provided. But I think that Mindy and Joe, you know, have shown yet again what it means to have representatives who are dedicated to the well-being of the town. And who, who go the extra mile. And you know that their support was particularly cited, along with the support of Jim McGovern. When the MBLC was considering a, the request for extension. I would like to ask that our good clerk compose a letter for Mindy Dom, a letter for Joe and a letter for Jim McGovern. That the letter be sent the old-fashioned way, before the post office is privatized to, to each of them. And if it's okay with you, I think we might authorize a good clerk to sign on behalf of all of us. And are we all good, are we all okay with that? Okay, and we can, we can invite him to the forthcoming library holiday party to further express our appreciation. Okay, buildings and facilities. Farah?
We have not met since the last time, I think George has been out, but there hasn't been much to discuss, so we did not, we canceled our meeting last week. But I don't know if there's anything to report regarding the building, Sharon, yes, no?
No. No, and Mr. President, I want to, there's another, there's another topic underneath President's report, I wanted to make sure you get to it, thank you. The summer redesign invoices.
Oh yeah, I don't, I'm sorry, I must have had an old agenda. So we have some invoices that, thank you Sharon, that require our approval. These invoices are part of, or pursuant to the work that we asked FAA subcontractors to do. And Sharon, do you just want to walk us through those invoices and kind of explain?
Yeah, thank you, so back in June, you all approved $550,700 to come out of the endowment for the value engineering process. And out of that amount, we have a little over $21,000 left right now. We have just received another invoice from FAA for almost $42,000. And I just received four invoices from the town for the ads that appeared in the Daily Hampshire Gazette for prequel and qualification and prequel one, prequel two, and the temporary space and for the GC. So those invoices for the Gazette total almost $2,400. And I was told by FAA that we should expect one more invoice from them, I'm not sure how much it'll be for. And so if you take the 44 and change thousand that we need to pay now and subtract the 21 and change that we have, we need, what I'm asking for from you is, we need at least $23,000. But what I'm asking for is $50,000 just to round it up so that I don't have to come back again and that'll be about a $27,000 cushion for whatever FAA will need when I get their December invoice.
Is there a reason for not coming back when you have the invoice? I mean, other than just?
I certainly can, yeah, if you want to go right to the dime, then $22,967.38 is what I need right now.
So would someone like to move that we authorize the transfer of that amount of money out of the endowment for the purpose of paying these invoices, Lee?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any, any discussion?
Nat? Just to clarify, since I'm a little bit new to this process, but these invoices will first need to be approved by the JL, JBLC?
So JLBC is, still has to approve the $42,000 invoice that we got from FAA. But the four ads that appeared, the town has already paid those, so they won't go to JLBC. And then when the next invoice comes from FAA, that will go to JLBC.
And then once they approve that, then that's paid directly from the endowment, or is that reimbursed to the town?
Yeah, so the town will pay the bills first and then we will reimburse the town and yeah, it just gets directly wired.
Back to us and ask us for more money?
Once we get the, the next FAA invoice, then I'll come back to you again.
Can I have that exact amount again, just for the, the minutes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Lee Edwards?
I didn't mean to raise my hand and now I don't know how to.
It's disappeared, you're, no, it's back up. It's disappeared, okay, you're good. Jean, are you all set? Okay, are we ready to vote? On the question of approving the transfer of these funds out of the endowment? Jean?
Yes.
Farah?
Yes.
Tammy? Didn't hear you, Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you. Lee, Lee Edwards?
Yes.
Nat?
And yes.
And Austin votes yes, thank you Sharon for not allowing that to slip by. On buildings and facilities, either Farah or Sharon, can you just kind of tell us what's going on at the branches, I mean, I know in your director's report, there's stuff about the activities, but anything to say about what's going on at the branches?
Pretty unmuted. Do you mean programming wise, or do you mean the actual buildings themselves?
I mean, I think that the board on a regular basis ought to just hear an update on the branches. Buildings, program, staff, utilization, again, some of that's in your report. But I think the branches are important to all of us and I just think we should hear on a semi-regular basis what's going on.
Yeah, I do, I tie the, because I think of us all as one big library, so I tie us all in and when I, when I share the programming information, that's what's going on at the branches too, yeah, so very often, more and more programs that are happening at the Jones are, are being tried out at the branches. The staff there work with the town to reserve the, the different meeting rooms and they're attended beautifully and things are just really smooth at both of the branches. And you know, the town is working out the kinks at the North Amherst Library as far as the building goes and the keys and letting people into the meeting room, which is separate from what library staff does. But yeah, and people are really quite happy.
Has utilization at the North Amherst Library changed since the renovation?
I think it's about where it was before, I'd have to go back and look at, you know, to pre-COVID, and that was so long ago at this point.
I wonder if the next, for our next meeting, you could just give us a little update on the branches?
Yeah.
Remind us again about how the staffing works and how the staffing is working at the branches. Just a little update, I think would be, would be good for all of us.
Okay, thank you.
Farah, are we all good, buildings and facilities wise? Okay, thank you.
That's a good question.
Yeah, sorry.
Related to buildings and also the North and South, there was something in the report, I believe, about gender-neutral bathrooms. So is this, this is something that would be a town responsibility at the North and South Amherst Libraries and, and what's the kind of timeline and, and process there?
So the town received a request to consider changing the bathrooms at the Munson Library into gender-neutral. And so Jeremiah met with the town manager and the DEI Director Pamela Nolan Young. And they talked about it and it, it's, it's more than just changing the signs, there are, in order to bring it up to code, it's, there's an expense and nobody was complaining about this, the expense, they just have to budget for it. And then they started talking about, you know, the bigger picture, do they do it at all the, the town bathrooms? And so it just kind of, it, it's in that thinking stage at this point. So that's all I know about it right now.
Okay, all set on that, ready to move to the development committee?
Okay, so.
Lee?
Yep. Can you hear me? Yes.
Yeah.
So for the annual fund, we're more or less where we were at the same time last year, right around $50,000. And there's, as I'm sure you all have gotten your latest mailings about contributing to the annual fund at the end of the year, if you're so inclined. We are optimistic that this appeal will yield additional funds. And I'll let you know next month. And I know when you hear from the Friends, maybe Rich will tell you about some of the things that the Friends are doing, that contribute money that can be used for the library, I mean, is, is contributed for the library, but that doesn't really show up in the annual fund subject to the 80/20 split. But, so we're, we're doing well, we're quite pleased. But now I have some exciting news that I'm gonna make in the form of a motion.
Good.
So I move that the trustees vote to approve the following recommendation, which was voted unanimously at a recent Friends Board meeting, that half a million dollars from the Woodbury Fund be used to support the renovation and expansion of the Jones Library. What I find is to be truly thrilling and exciting and wonderful, so, so moved.
We, we need a second, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
So I want to just speak to it if I may, first of all, it's, you know, it's a kind of goosebumps on your neck moment to hear that. And yet another example of the way in which the Friends of the Jones Library are indispensable. And by that, I don't just mean that they're giving half a million dollars to the building project. But I take it that this donation to the building project reflects the Friends' consider, considered judgment about what the long-term, what can benefit the long-term future of the library. And I'll just say, it's just, I mean, it's just amazing, it's amazingly generous. It is again, a kind of thrilling vote of confidence from the group that I think knows the library as well, if not better than any other group in the town. And I just, I think it's, I think it's amazing, so amazing that I promise not to be disappointed when the Red Sox do not sign a significant free agent. And I want to convey our gratitude to the Friends. And I hope, again, we could actually do it the old-fashioned way, which is to write them a letter. And I think the letter should come from the trustees. And it would be great when the appropriate moment came when there was a big check, you know, one of those like Monte Hall checks of $500,000 and we could all gather around it and receive it. And I promise to dress appropriately. So any other? Yeah, Farah?
Oh, I just wanted to add that I received personally from the Friends a Golden Pickleball last week for my help during the tournament, so I wanted to say how much I appreciated that.
That is completely fabulous, and next meeting, could you do a show and tell? I mean, I, it's like, life would be fulfilled if I got to see a Golden Pickleball, that is fabulous, Sharon?
Yeah, so just, you know, for the record, for those in the audience and for eternity, I just wanted to talk, give a little bit more background, I, I think Austin and I are probably the only two who were here in, since the beginning and, and this is, this is really, really important. And I love what Austin said about how the Friends really thought this through, this wasn't a, hey, somebody raises their hand and let's just throw them $500,000. It was really thought out. The Woodberries, they were longtime library patrons, members of the Friends. In 2010, their estates left a large bequest over $500,000 to the Jones Library, saying that it would solely be used for the purpose of and is directed by the Friends. And it has, had to be approved, the expenditures had to be approved by the trustees. And so at that time, that was even before my time, the trustees and the Friends and the staff, they talked about options, you know, what do we do with this amount of money? They sought input from the public. And after looking at all the possibilities, they decided that refurbishing the, the large meeting room at the time, that was the clear priority. And so those renovations began in, in 2012, I was there at that point. And, and now it resulted in the Woodbury Room. And it's amazing, because if you had seen it, what it was before, oh, awful, anyways. So also at that time, we were all having discussions about the building project, you know, what we're, what we're working on now. And what the Friends thought was they, they would take the remainder of, of the Woodbury Fund and, and invest it with, with the library's foundation account with Vanguard. Actually, it was with a, a different firm at that time. And their intention was, at that time, to use the remaining funds for the building. I, I do have a lovely quote from George Goodwin, who the Goodwin Room is named after, and he was on the board of the Friends, he said, quote, "Just as the Woodbury Room renovation was a one-time large expenditure project, we may choose to do more such bold undertakings." And so we're at that point of, of another bold undertaking and I'm so grateful to the Friends for the, the work that they've put in, you know, since 2012 and overseeing the Woodbury Fund and working with the trustees, I think the relationship between the trustees and the Friends right now is really beautiful and important, with a lot of respect between everybody. And just one final note that I want to remind people is that, so the Woodbury Room, the Goodwin Room, the Burnett Art Gallery, the Burnett Art Gallery Room, all of those spaces are going to remain with those names, so as part of this building project that we're working on. So yeah, I just wanted to give that background, thank you for letting me.
Thank you, Sharon. Anything else? Yeah, Lee?
Yeah, well, as long as Sharon's brought up the history, I think it might be worth underlining my understanding that when the Woodbury Room was most recently renovated, care was taken such that everything that was put into the renovation that could be repurposed, that wasn't going to be like timed out, can be reused in the renovated and expanded building. I mean, maybe the audiovisual can't because it has a short lifespan, but everything else, as I understand it, is going to be reused, is that correct?
Sharon?
Yes, thank you.
So I have just a couple of other things, Sharon, can you talk about how this transfer might affect the ability of the Friends to support, for example, programming activities going forward?
Yeah, so you know, as Lee has said so often, the, the fundraising arm of the Friends has really transformed over these past five-plus years. They are, it is a much more robust program and and Pickleball is a perfect example. And so at one point, the Friends group started to rely on the Woodbury Fund for that programming, but it was never meant to be used as an endowment and and so once this building project is done, the annual fund will be all about the annual fund, which will continue to be as successful as it is now, if not more so, and, and that money will go towards the, the programming. In the interim, you know, like between now and when the, the programming. In the interim, you know, like between now and when the building project begins, less programming, I think, will be happening just because of the building project and because we'll be offsite. We'll be doing programs out to the community and, and that kind of a thing. But then after that, it'll be more Friends fundraising that we'll be relying on.
Right. Okay, anything else on this welcome motion? Lee?
I'll say when I get to the budget committee, it's okay.
So are we ready to vote on this, again, very welcome and wonderful development? Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you. Jean?
Yes.
Nat?
Yes.
Farah?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And Austin votes yes. But is it, would it be appropriate that there be a collective hurrah? I don't know, Sharon. I think that's the first time in the modern history of the board that the board has ever hurrahed in unison.
I agree.
Please, please make sure that that's in the minutes. Okay, so Lee, anything else from development?
No, you'll get to hear from me. I know you're excitedly awaiting to hear from the budget report. You'll hear from me again. Otherwise, I'll lapse into silence.
Absolutely. Please don't do that. And please be sure to refer to it by its modern name, the Budget and Investment. Okay, Farah, PPP?
PPP has not met since the last board meeting, but I believe Farah may have a report on the Jedi Committee.
Yep. Thank you, Tammy.
We, Jedi met this morning. We had, we welcomed our new member. We talked, we had all, after the survey report, we had all had some action, some tasks, so different, a couple of groups had gone out to, to follow up. One of the things that I did with Melissa Giroux was we met with share, because we were looking, we were talking, we were talking about collections and programming and how we can make sure that it's more, like, it's what the community wants. And so we'd met with Sharon and Linda, and we had a really, really good discussion with them about, and Linda was talking a little bit about the books she gets and how sometimes patrons make suggestions and how going forward, maybe we could put out a survey asking patrons if, you know, if they would want, like, what kind of books were they looking for or whether they want a personalized list, a reading list based on what they're reading and a bunch of other things. We talked about programming and Linda had talked a little bit about how, actually, we didn't touch on this at our meeting today because we ran out of time, but she had talked a little bit about how it's kind of hard right now to look too far ahead in terms of programming because we don't know what's happening with the building.
Yeah.
But besides that, some of, another group had gone out and they were discussing how we can bring the survey to the staff and see what their reaction is and also see how we can get them, try to get more like DEI-based, get them to attend more workshops. So that's all something that, that we're discussing. And we're also trying to figure out how we can reach out to the community. So we're, we're going to discuss a lot about that next month, next, at our next meeting, just to see how we can figure out what the community's needs are. I know this sounds really broad, but when we get to the meetings, everybody's just really excited and there's a lot of discussion and just feels like an hour is too short, but it's an amazing group of people who are really dedicated to doing this work. So, yeah, it was a good meeting.
Thank you, Farah. Questions? So Farah, I want to ask a, a question. So the world of DEI work has really changed in the last several years. And there are many models of DEI work, I think, that are now out there in private and public organizations. And I'm not talking about change in response to political pressure from the outside. And I wonder how, if at all, that your, the Jedi Committee is kind of plugging into the broader conversations about DEI work that are going on, as I said, in public and private conversations?
We're not really at that stage. I think one of the things in that direction is in a couple of months. In February, Pamela Nolan Young is coming to our meeting and we're hoping to sort of tap into her resources a little bit more. But right now, it's more about what, what, what the needs are in our community. And how they're, just based on our survey, who are the kids who are feeling profiled? Who are the families who are not feeling? So ours is more, it's more smaller because we're just trying to find out what the community needs from our library. But I, you know, at some point, I guess we will get broader. And I think Pamela could help us a little bit in terms of that, but that's where we're at.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So I have a question for PPP. I noticed in the minutes of the PPP that there was a reference to my favorite subject, which is library governance. And I wondered where that conversation is and when the PPP will come back to the board and facilitate a conversation about models of library governance, what, what we've learned.
This is the project that Eugene initiated. And he's been working on flow charts and ideas of how to present graphically how the Jones is organized. And I don't know if he wants to speak to that now or wait till our next meeting. Jean?
I could speak to it. It's in a draft state, just trying to untangle the complexity of stuff that happens in Amherst. Is, is fun and revealing. We've had some good discussions. The, the, my thought was the next PP meeting, as we discussed in the prior PP meeting, PPP meeting, that we would look at the draft then, get any input and decide whether or not it's ready for the, the larger group of trustees. I could share what I, what I have now after the meeting if we want, or we can wait until the, the PPP committee has vetted it during the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm not, I wasn't urging that you, you share it. Now, if anybody else wants to, they should. I, I'm just, there's a library word called having spilkeys. And I'm having spilkeys about this, about this report. So do you think it'll be in January? Or when do you think, assuming that the PPP doesn't have to send back for revisions, what's our timeframe? That's what I'm trying to get a sense of.
I think we could commit to January. It's, I would say it's eighty-nine percent done, ninety percent done. I'm just looking for some input and to make sure that it's, it's truthful because of the complexity again, so.
Yeah. I must say, you know someone is precise when they say it's eighty-nine percent done. I appreciate that precision. Okay, well, thank you. And thank you for the, for the work. We'll look forward to to that conversation. I have another question, and I've, I have, don't have the recollection of this. I believe we've talked in the past about reviewing the bylaws on an annual basis. And I don't remember the last time we did it. I remember that we did do it because Bob, Pam, among others, had suggestions. And for all I know, it could have been, you know, two months ago, but I just want to make sure that it's on the calendar, so to speak, of the PPP and the board on, on a regular basis.
Okay, we'll take it up at our next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, a report from the Budget and Investment Committee.
Committee, yes. Okay, so the framework is, was quite uneventful. We carried out our ongoing review of the budget and expenses for this year, which seemed to be on track. There's nothing unusual to report. The ten ninety for the library is about to be submitted, or by now may actually have been submitted. The third item on my list, you've already taken care of, that Sharon had a motion about approving funds related to the summer. I'm glad that's off my plate. And so give you the news that the endowment as of December one was at nine million, three hundred, two thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. And of some more than usual interest this month, the Woodbury Fund was at seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So that even given the most generous commitment of five hundred thousand dollars of that money, we have close to three hundred thousand dollars remaining in the Woodbury Fund over this period while the library is being constructed. And we conclude successfully the capital campaign to raise to work, to, to shift the significance of our fundraising efforts from the capital campaign back to the annual fund. And I'm, I, I am very optimistic. I always say that. I wish I had another word, but I, I think it's just going to be terrific. I think that as we hoped, the success of the capital campaign will feed enthusiasm for the library generally, and that will lift the capital, the, the annual fund. And that's what the Friends will turn their attention to even more. And it's all going to be good. That's my report.
Thank you, Lee. Questions for Budget and Investment?
I may, I may have misheard or something, but just for Jean's benefit in the minutes, Lee was referring to the filing of the nine ninety?
I said, I meant to say ten ninety. Is it nine ninety?
Yeah, I believe it's the it's the, the federal tax return.
Right.
The nine ninety, I believe.
Nine ninety, sorry. Sorry.
Okay, we good?
Couldn't read my own handwriting.
I hope we filed the right form. So that is, that is good. Okay, thank you. Budget Investment. I have one quick question. Have you had any dealings with the people from Mercer?
Yeah, I think two meetings ago, Dan, whose last name I've forgotten, came to our meeting and I reported it, I think at the last meeting. Yeah, but we haven't had any, we haven't had any further dealings with.
Yeah, but, but things are, from your point of view,
Yeah.
Going swimmingly.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
But Matt may have.
Just to, to add to that, my understanding, it's the same personnel from Vanguard that moved over to Mercer.
That's what we understood.
Yeah, but my sense is that it's a, my, my first time meeting in person, but I was very impressed with the personnel and the relationship.
Okay. All right, next. Thank you. Thank you, Lee. Thank you, Nat. Next is a report from the Friends.
Yes, I think I speak on behalf of my colleagues on the executive board, grateful for the support of the trustees and supporting this grant from the Woodbury Fund. I thought it was, I really appreciate the fact, as I get older in my life, that the people who inspired this fund, who are the ones who made the, made the actual contribution. And I don't know whether there's anybody on the screen who was personally acquainted with the Woodberries. I, I was not, but I am not, but I, I just think that this is, and we had some, some discussion about this as to how this met the intent of the Woodbury, the, the, the origins of the Woodbury Fund. And we decided, we decided that it did, the grant did meet those, meet that intent in a, in a really terrific way. I wish I could say we all sort of came to this together, but no, no, it sort of came in a certain way that at least my ears were sort of pinned back by the idea, like, why didn't I think of that? And then when, it just seemed to make terrific sense to us after, after it was discussed for, to some extent. So we are grateful that we are facilitating this grant and the Friends, and we honor the intent and the spirit of the origins of the fund. And the fund will continue. You may have heard the math from Lee. There's still an extensive amount of, there's still quite a bit of, quite a bit of money there for the Friends to help manage along with the annual fund. So this is, it's a terrific situation for us to be in. On more mundane things, we're still trying to find a time to meet that will accommodate a new recruits to the executive board, having a little trouble with that, but we're working that out. And I also want to mention the fundraising that was done for pickleball. I don't know whether that's come up, but it's, I'm told it's somewhere between seventeen and twenty thousand dollars that is going to assist alum, the annual fund. And we're starting to talk about the book sale for 2025. And trying to just come up with other ways to, to help the mission of the library as we go forward. We're all always looking for new executive board members. So if you know people who love the libraries, please, you know, mention this, this opportunity to serve. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Any, any questions? So I have a couple of things, Rich. And Sharon, you can help me. So we had a practice of an annual joint meeting with the Friends, with the board of the Friends. And my, when I was last with the Friends, it was for a wonderful presentation in the meeting room at the, at the Munson. That was, that was great. And I was there for a board meeting. But I wonder if we can kind of resume putting on a calendar annually, a joint meeting with the Friends Board and the Board of the, the Jones. I've found those meetings in the past really instructive, and it was great to get together with the Friends Board and talk, talk about our joint interests.
And I take it that that would have to be a public meeting. And so it would have to be noticed under the open meeting law and all, and all that. But I, I will bring this up with, with the Friends. We're meeting on the second of January.
And then I have a suggestion or a thought which I'm going to direct to the Friends, but maybe it's better directed somewhere else. We have said repeatedly how the role and function of libraries, public libraries, will be, is and will be more important than it has ever been. And public libraries are likely to face challenges. They've already faced lots of them in the new world that we are entering. And I wonder if we could, the Friends could put on a an event, I was going to say big event, but I didn't want to scare anybody away, an event about this question. The role of libraries, democracy, challenges of a time when democracy itself seems to be under threat, and most importantly, a time when democracy itself seems to be losing its hold on the allegiances of vast numbers of people in this country, though not necessarily in Amherst. And And I don't have a particular thing beyond that. We were privileged that, we heard that wonderful rousing pitch for public libraries in Johnson Chapel. But I wonder whether or not the Friends might be interested in that, in that kind of event. And I want to make a suggestion of a couple of possible eventers. Is that the right word? People at an event are eventers? One of my colleagues retired from Amherst. We had a retirement party, and I wrote an ode. And I said that the one who reads the ode should be known as the Oder. They didn't think it was funny either, but I thought it was kind of cute. So could we, for example, get, I mean, invite someone like Tony Marx from the New York Public Library? Could we invite, again, I'm just, I, like, the Librarian of Congress? And put on a big, again, to use library word, McGilla event around this, around this theme?
Well, I will, I will bring it up with the Executive Board. You know, we've had, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to ignore that we've had sort of an existential discussion about libraries and where they fit in the institutional life of the town, in the civic life of the town. So we've had that going on already. But I'm just hoping we could, I, you know, I'm thinking we could do something that wouldn't be locally politicized, but would be part of a, sort of a bigger discussion. I'm actually starting to see some press about this, about libraries. I, I think I've seen more press about the function of libraries in the national press more than I ever have. It's, it's come up quite a bit. I think Sharon's shaking, nodding her head, so she's seen the, the press too. But I will, I will bring this up with the Friends, and we'll have a bigger discussion about, about what we might do.
Yeah, and I, I think that's right, Rich. I, I love the fact that people in our town have been so engaged in the discussion about the library. Whatever side they're on, I love the fact that people in this town have invested so much of their time in trying to advocate for whatever conception of the library they have. It makes us a better town, it makes us a better library, it makes us better trustees. Applause is nice. I was in a meeting of the Faculty of Amherst College, and I was going to say something in the name of constructive criticism to the President of the College. And I said to the President in front of the assembled faculty, I said, "I want you to know that I love you." And he said, "So you say." And then I said, and of course, the best expression of love is constructive criticism. And he said, "So you say." So I love the, the, that there's engagement and that people express their love for the library and the people who work in it by expressing constructive criticism. It makes us a better town. But I really liked what you said, Rich, because I think there's another conversation to be had. How it intersects with the local conversation will play out if this event happens. And that is to remind ourselves and remind our town that the debate about the library, and by the way, I don't think there's much of a debate about the library. The debate that takes place about how the library can best serve the community and what facilities is part of a national conversation. And, you know, Tony Marx was the President of Amherst, he's now the President of the New York Public Library, has a local tie. In any case, whoever they might be, it would be really, I think, wonderful to have that kind of, that kind of event. And I will be eager to hear the reaction from the, from the Executive Committee. Thank you for, thank you for thinking about it.
I'll, I'll pass that along.
Great, thanks, thanks so much. Sharon, Sherry, the Director's report.
The only thing that I wanted to highlight is, if you haven't been to the Burnett Art Gallery lately, you need to go this month because the staff of the library are exhibiting. There's maybe twenty-five different staff members with their, with, with pieces of their art. It's really spectacular. We love that the Burnett Art Gallery Committee asked staff to do this. And, and I also, I think it's really impressive for the staff to take that leap. You know, people tend to become librarians because they're shy, kind of introverted. And on top of it, when you're an artist who doesn't necessarily normally show what they produce, it's, it's a piece of them, and they've put it on display for the entire public to see. And I just give the staff so much credit for it. So I'm encouraging you to go and see it if you have the opportunity. That's really all I wanted to highlight.
Thank you for that, and thank you for the, the report. Thank you for the wonderful document that was prepared for the town that included in your report. Any questions for Sharon? So I have a question for all of you that I'd like you to answer. And I hope you won't find it taxing to be asked it. What I'd like you to do is to share with all of us what, in the course of this year, you are most proud of about the work of the Amherst Libraries. And to start the conversation, I'd like to ask the Director to tell us what she is most proud of over the course of the year.
Gosh, okay, so it's really hard to not, my brain always goes to the building project first. And, and I just, I want to highlight the staff. So what the staff have been through over these past five, six years or so has been really intense. And, and you all have, have been there too, but it's different when you're on the front lines. And so last spring, we, the staff, we thought we were moving out. And so everything stopped, and their brains went, okay, into high gear. How do we, how do we move? How do we function in the new place? How do we have programs in other places? You know, the fine arts collection, where does that go? And working with new entities. So excitement and, and fear, and, and then it all fell flat. And, and, and our hearts sank, and, but the staff, they went back to it. And, and bam, they went right into putting together an incredible in-person summer reading program. And it was spectacular. It was one of the most highly, if not the most highly participated in summer reading program that the Jones has ever had. And so watching what they do and how many balls they juggle, and they still have those smiles on their faces, genuine smiles, really loving what they do. That's what I'm, I'm, I, I'm not sure I want to use the word proud, because that makes it, just pride. I just, I am in awe of them. Thank you for asking.
All right, Nat, you're up.
Mute myself here. So I, I go back to things I might see in the, in the paper or whatever that, that really moved me. And this past year, I know this happens every year, but, but the Naturalization Ceremony for the New Americans. And to me, that, that just is so important, and maybe, maybe this year more than other years. But, but when I was reading about that and hearing about all the stories, that just had such a big impact on me.
Thank you, Nat. Gene?
It's, 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 it's an interesting question. The thing that comes to the top of my mind is, I, I staff the, the pop-up tent at the Block Party. I've done that for, I think, two years now. But what always struck me is, you just get a parade of people coming up and, and, and rhapsodizing how, about how awesome the, the Jones Library is. And a lot of these are UMass students, Amherst College students coming in. It's like, I got my library card. It's a great place. You know, we, we go there all the time because they have fiction, which our library doesn't have. And, and there was just like a, a level of engagement with the college students, all the little elementary school students coming in and getting their stickers and their tattoos this year. And even hearing, because I listen to New England Public Radio, I listen to the classical music during the day, and Amherst College Radio steals or hijacks that station for a couple of hours each day. And they do, you know, various student-run shows. And one of, one of their little rotating PSAs is, you know, "Visit the Jones, it's really great." And then like, all the students kind of, again, just talking about how awesome it is that they're able to get to this no-pressure place to either unwind, read fiction, get work done in a place that's, that's, that's not kind of, I guess, a, a not, it's, it's much more conducive for them, I guess. So just kind of just thinking about the, the, that one thing of all the things that the library does in the town, it, it actually kind of surprised me, because why would college students go to the library? And apparently, they do, and a lot of them do, and they're really, really, really enthusiastic about that. And I would then sort of pile on a little bit to what Sharon said, and it's like, they, they all seem to really, really appreciate the staff there. So it's just a really great organization that, that really impacts a lot of parts of the town.
Farah, I want to ask you, is impacts a verb?
Impact, yeah.
No, impacts. Jean said it impacts the town. I just want to make sure that was a verb.
Yeah.
Okay.
I come from corporate America, so there's, yeah, there's all this, there's all the jargon there, and I
No, I just wanted, because Farah is, is like our, our consultant on all things proper, grammatically and English-wise. So Farah, what's, what is the thing that you would share about the thing that makes you most proud of the library?
So I actually was going to say what Sharon said. For me, it's always the staff, because I, I'm in there, I, I go to work at the library many days of the week. And I always have conversations with them, and usually, you know, or they're, they're usually, they, they'll usually say something like, "Thanks so much for all you do," and I'm like, "What are you talking about?" You know? "We really appreciate all you do," and, you know, they're all, they're stressed. They have different takes on things, but they're always smiling, they're always so helpful. And I just, I've just, and, you know, I've been seeing these people, been in this town fourteen years, from when my kid was little, and it's the same people most of the time. And I just really appreciate how, how they are with the patrons, with just the fact that they're so positive and upbeat, and I don't, and the way the programming has, has continued, but also how they seem to wear different hats, like, we have a couple of them on Jedi, like Mia was the main person, and now Linda is taking over while Mia is covering for Claire. And it's just the enthusiasm they bring to everything, and the fact that they know so much, and they know the patrons. I just, I, I'm always amazed by that when I walk in there. But also, can I just add one more thing? I did attend that ceremony Nat was talking about, and I, I was just sobbing, because I did the same thing in, in New York twenty, like, ten or twelve years ago. And it's just, it's always so moving, but I think it was particularly moving this year, just because of the political situation, so.
Thank you, Farah.
Yep. Oh, and Austin, it's not eventer.
We'll talk after class. Lee Edwards?
I'm gonna be brief. I'm gonna allude to Elizabeth Warren. I'm gonna say "we", and by "we" I mean all of us, the trustees, Capital Campaign Committee, the Friends, the staff, the library director, the President of the Board of Trustees, the town. We persevered.
Thank you, Lee. Pammy?
I spend a lot of time at Munson. I can walk there, and I hang out there a lot. And I've really gotten to know the librarian who's in charge of the branches, and the assistant librarian in charge of the branches, plus all the staff who work there, some from North Amherst. And I have enormous respect for all of them, and I enjoy, as a librarian myself, I enjoy hanging out with librarians. And it's just a wonderful place. People come in, neighbors, and it's kind of a gathering place, and people greet one another and chat. And it's a very vibrant place, and I'm very appreciative that I live so close to it. The other thing I want to say about the staff in general is that when I do the evaluation of Sharon, the staff go overboard to help me posting things online, putting out boxes. And it's just wonderful that this, I, I can't say enough about the staff, so that's my one comment.
So, Rich?
Can I have a shot at this?
Only if you limit yourself to one thing. Couple of these people have violated the rule.
So I just want to say I'm very proud of the number of people who were complete outsiders this year, who were not direct beneficiaries of the library, who looked at what we are doing here and what the vision is for the future, and who got excited about it. And, and got excited maybe providing money, or, yeah, I'm going from John Lithgow to our Congressman, to various agencies that looked at the library and were, were awestruck by the, the planning and the vision and everything that went into what we are looking for, for the future. I'm very proud of that.
Thank you. It's hard to add to that list. The thing that makes me proudest of the library is how messy it is. Whenever I go in the library, there's disorder. There are little kids who are pulling against the hands of their parents and wanting to get too close to me and spread their germs. There are people in the library who would not be welcome in many of the spaces in the town. There are things that are lost, can't find. There are technology problems, can't make it work. There are people that are trying to find a job, and they can't figure out how to do it. There are people who are struggling to learn English, and it's painful for them. So what I'm most proud about the library is the mess. And that mess is a reflection of democratic life at its best. We celebrate the, the triumphs of democratic life. We celebrate the staff for all the good work that they do. But what makes our library, I think, remarkable is the mess, the humanness of it. Not its perfections, not its successes, but it is a distinctively human place. People don't line up, they don't wait for the bell to ring. They move in their own ways. And that is something I think remarkable. And anytime you go in the library, I think you're gonna see it. And that's what I'm most, I'm most proud of, and that's what I celebrate most about our library. Now, in the spirit of having broken traditions, come on, one more time, let's have a hurrah for our library. Come on.
Hurrah!
Hurrah! Hurrah! Way to go. You should all have, by the way, Sharon, what is Elf on the Shelf?
Molly has aged out, but if you have never had an elf on the shelf, I don't recommend beginning Elf on the Shelf. It, it, it's a fascinating little cultural thing, where you have to move the elf every night, and you can't touch the elf. And, and in theory, it, it helps your children be good. And, and in theory, it, it helps your children be good.
Well, I hope that you all have your own elves on the shelves for the holidays and really a happy and, most importantly, a healthy New Year.
And you too.
And we love you, we love you, Rich Morse. Stay well, everybody.
You too. Take care.
Have a hell it is.